Welcome to the first ever collaborative candidate conversation being hosted by Yolo People Power, Indivisible Yolo, and the Yolo Democratic Socialists. We're so glad that you're here tonight participating in Democracy in Action. We have divided the program tonight so that each district has an opportunity to explore the questions. You're welcome to leave after District 4 should that, should you have other places to go. You're welcome to stay. There will be a little 10-minute break in between. So with no further ado, I would like to welcome Jonathan London, who will be our moderator tonight. Some of you came tonight expecting to see Delane Easton. She recused herself as moderator due to the fact that she had previously endorsed several candidates. So Jonathan, at the last minute stepped in, and we're really grateful to have him here. Professor of Ecology at Human Ecology at UC Davis, a great thinker, a resident of Davis, and a former columnist in the Davis Enterprise. He will introduce our candidates tonight. So you'll see that the rules of engagement tonight are the, we decided to make this different than other forums just to give it a try. So I hope you'll whirl with us on this. Jonathan will ask an initial question. The candidates will have 90 seconds to respond. And if there might be a need for greater clarification or follow-up, he has the authority to ask a follow-up question of both of the candidates. They'll have 45 seconds to respond to the follow-up question. Dylan Horton is here today, who will be projecting the time on the screen and providing cards for the speakers to know when they have reached their limit. This is not a debate. This is a conversation. And the goal is for you to get to know these amazing people who are courageously running for office and get to know them, their personalities, and the issues, and how they respond to some of the key issues. So we're going to ask you to refrain from any applause until the event is, this section is over. And then I hope you'll join me in a round of applause for them for having the courage to be candidates. Are there any questions at this point? Seeing none, welcome Jonathan. And thank you for being here and for introducing our candidates.
Thank you so much, Cheska. Thanks for all being here, as you said, so wisely to be part of Democracy in Action. And I'm happy to be part of that. I'm going to start by introducing our candidates. Sitting to my right is Gloria Partita, who has been on the Davis City Council for a long time and is just finishing her term as mayor. On my left is Adam Morrell, who works at the Davis Department of Public Works as an environmental program specialist. So a really terrific field. I'm going to start answering questions. As Cheska mentioned, they're short answers, and I do have this gavel right next to me. So that's, that's quite a bit of authority. So I'll start with you, Gloria. Could you tell us, what are the current strengths of our municipal governance? And in what areas, if any, would you work to change? And how would you do that?
Great. Thank you for doing this, Jonathan, first of all, and thank you, everybody, for being here. I think that the strength of any municipal government is the ability to serve. And that should be number one. And I think that our city does a really good job of making sure that we understand what the priorities are of our citizens and making those priorities a reality. And so to that end, it's, it's really important for me to make sure that I am advocating that our staff is listening and that there is, and that we understand what the concerns are of our citizens, and that we are delivering on, on the priorities that people are asking for. As far as what I think that we could, you know, improve on, you know, there are a lot of challenges that we have. Affordable housing is, is one of them. And I think that, you know, we need to be as creative as we can be. And we, we need to, you know, really put as much effort as, as we can into, into that problem. In fact, you know, it is something that we are working on right now.
And we will have time for that and a specific question as we go. So thank you for raising that. So Adam, I'll just repeat the question for you as well. So you have it. What are the current strengths of our municipal governance? And in what areas, if any, would you work to change and how?
The general structure that we have is, is great. It provides a lot of opportunities for public participation, avenues for direct democracy with Measure J votes on any peripheral developments. What I would change is how things are done currently. A lot of things are on the agenda as consent items rather than items for discussion by council. There's not much rigorous debate over issues that the public sees. Most decisions are made beforehand and put on consent agenda items. And currently, a lot of recommendations are coming from the bottom up rather than from the top down. Council should be directing staff to provide options for different proposals, giving them a status quo, best case, and then something in the middle, and giving them the pros and unbiased pros and cons, and then let the council make the ultimate decision on which way staff should go.
Thank you so much. Back to you, Gloria. What services do you think the City of Davis is doing well? And what, if any, would you work to improve?
So there are a number of services, I think, that the city does really well at. I think the, you know, our Parks and Rec is fabulous. If anybody has had children that have participated in our Parks and Rec services, they are, they're, you know, they serve a great purpose, especially for people of middle income who need an affordable way for their children to be engaged. I think that our senior center engages also are another vulnerable population. And I think that those two programs are often overlooked in some of the, in when we think about like what our city does for our community. And those two programs, I think, really speak to providing a quality of life for everyone. Aside from that, I think that Public Works does a great job. I mean, nobody thinks about whether or not the water's coming out of their tap, or the, you know, services that you are, are expecting. You get all of those services. Recently, we did a, we worked with city staff and with some people on our commission to find some money to improve our roads. And so, you know, if you've seen a lot of road improvements lately, that is because we put together a plan where we would take our, our roads on a trajectory for improvement. And so, you know, there are a number of places I think that we do well.
Thank you so much, Adam. Over to you on services. So what services do you think the City of Davis is doing particularly well? And what, if any, would you change and how?
I would agree with a lot of what Gloria said. Perfect example, the, the rank-and-file utilities workers are constantly getting kudos from the public. We have guys doing nasty jobs cleaning sewer lines. And oftentimes, they could say, well, that's on your side. And if it's not a big ball of roots, they'll go the extra mile to actually clear that line for the customer and provide that customer service. And, and that's where the city really shines is with our rank-and-file and the level of customer service they provide. I'd like to point out the camps, too. I mean, our kids have benefited greatly from the camps in town. And it's, I think that's really something the city does well. Things like Camp Pooda, which probably anyone who's been in Davis for a long time might have even gone to it themselves. So. Areas we need to improve, we need to hire an IPM specialist. That position has been sitting vacant for several years. That was a priority for council and for the commissions. And we're seeing the effects of it now by all the weeds everywhere because we don't have anyone guiding that program. The urban forestry program is highly understaffed right now. We're relying on contractors. We don't have an arborist on staff. We don't have a management structure that's effective. We have a manager, a supervisor, and one worker. We need to address those spanic control issues and make sure that we have an adequate number of workers to do the work and with a minimal number of management personnel.
Thank you so much. Gloria, could you describe to us an example of how you've worked with city officials and other members of our community to advance a local policy objective?
Sure. Actually, there are a number of subcommittees that I've sat on where we've, you know, worked towards a, you know, a new policy for the city. The one that I just mentioned about the roads was one. And then I also was on the subcommittee when we were setting up our, our new department of Housing and Social Services. And that was a really critical part of, of getting our, you know, services to our homeless and our mental health crisis. And so that, that I am particularly proud of. But I think that the, that the one that, that was, that affected most people in our community was Healthy Davis Together. And in that program, with that, in that collaboration, I worked with UC Davis and the county, and our congregations, and our nonprofits, which actually was very familiar to me because before my time on council, I've spent 30 years doing very similar work. So I've, you know, started a nonprofit, and I've worked with nonprofits. And it, you know, when I first came to Davis, I worked with the school district to get, to implement our full inclusion program for kids with disabilities. And so it's very familiar work for me to, to work and to bring forth a new program. So there's, my time is up.
Thank you. So Adam, could you describe to us a time that you've worked with city officials to, and other members of the community to achieve a local aim?
Yeah. So the biggest thing in advancing any policy is education and outreach. I'm currently doing that in my position with the city on the food diversion programs, working to educate restaurants, supermarkets, on options for food diversion, and again, to making sure that they divert their organic so that we can achieve as close to zero waste as possible in these food establishments, which are some of the largest generators of waste in the city. And along with that is educating the public as well, and working with them to, to address these needs. As far as, in a larger scale, when I worked for state EMS authority, I was responsible for rolling out a brand-new EMT certification. So I had to travel around the state and educate individual fire departments, EMS agencies, federal agencies, as well as conducting speaking and training at conferences to deliver that. And that's really the most important part of any policy is educating the public as to why we're doing it and what the importance of it is.
Great. Thanks, Adam. So here's a fun one. Every person, Gloria, has talents, and some are well-known, and others are hidden. So what personal superpower have you brought or have you brought or will bring as a city council member?
So when I read this question, it made me very uncomfortable. Thank you, Cheska. So it's, it's not something that I typically, you know, think about. But I, I have to say that having spent, you know, almost 30 years on campus as a neurobiologist, the, the thing that I became very good at was taking a look at, you know, how to solve problems, and to really ask questions, and to look at the bigger picture, and, and then to research and, and think about what the best solution is. And I definitely bring that to every problem that, that I've solved. And it's, it's really important in this job because there are often very loud voices that drown out some of the facts that may be out there and some of the voices that may be out there. So if I had a superpower, I think it would be, you know, really listening and understanding folks and, and taking, taking what, what I'm, what I'm hearing and translating that into a policy that's equitable and that really represents our community.
Thank you so much. We may, we may be getting costumes for the superpowers soon. So be, be on the lookout for those. So Adam, could you tell us, given that some strengths are visible and others hidden, what, what hidden superpower would you bring to city council?
Well, one, I can wear shorts in any kind of weather. I lived in Montana. I wear shorts. So I'm very uncomfortable today wearing pants at this. But, yes, of course. But what I bring is I have an in-depth knowledge of operations. I've worked for a municipal water district when I was going to school here at UC Davis. I learned how to actually fix water mains, running jackhammers, doing all the installing new water services. I understand those intimate aspects of working in utilities. I've worked as basically an IPM specialist for Department of Boating Waterways with their Water Hyacinth Control Program. I was the environmental scientist there in charge of that program as well. I've done a lot of these jobs. And I think having an inner working of how things work and what is possible and what is not possible, I think is very important for making decisions on whether we contract out services or decide that we need to hire people in, hire and retain good people in-house to provide those services.
Thank you so much. Turn back to you, Adam, to lead off as I go back and forth here. So in 2020, three city commissions and hundreds of community members advocated for structural changes in public safety. Is there anything, is there anything remaining from the nine public safety recommendations that you want to advance? And what have you done or will do to support these kinds of recommendations?
I think we've approached a lot of those recommendations pretty well. What I think is missing is community engagement with public safety. You don't see them out and about in the community and that building relationships with the community. And I think that's where trust ultimately starts, is by having a personal touch. I would love to see beat officers walking in downtown, going into shops, into restaurants, checking in, hey, is there anything that's going on that we should know about? Kind of old-school Andy Griffith, go in and just be a part of the community. In addition, I'd love to see the fire service out in the community as well. They are a part of public safety. And being out and being seen in the community, conducting CPR training, I would love to see more engagement with the police, with the youth, and, and doing youth camps with them, and teaching them about their jobs and, and what, what it's entailed, so that there's a greater community understanding of what's involved with public safety.
So I'll turn to you, Gloria. As you know, there have been great conversations about public safety. So I'll ask you that, any ideas that you have about the remaining nine public safety recommendations that you'd want to advance? And tell us maybe a little bit of what you've done on that.
Sure. And so the, of the nine recommendations, I, I do think that we have addressed a lot of them. We started, you know, the Police Accountability Commission. And, and through that commission, I think that there is, you know, the, the outreach, they're going to be doing an outreach event fairly soon here. And I agree. I think that our police should be in, you know, out in, in the public and get to know our folks. And I think they've done a good job of that even before, you know, all of, all of the conversations that we have had currently. The one recommendation that was, that was, you know, part of the nine recommendations that I think was the hardest to address was addressing the disparities in, like, police stops. And why is there a disparity in, in, you know, who the police pull over? And part of our Department of Housing and Social Services is, is a piece that addresses collecting data and analyzing that data. And that, I think that that's going to be very important to every aspect of the nine recommendations. And I just had a conversation recently with some folks from the police department. And we talked about, you know, when you pull over people who have got a broken headlight, is there a way that we can give vouchers to folks who may have a hard time getting those broken headlights fixed? Yes?
Always hard to attack a big question at that. And actually, on that note, I'm going to ask a follow-up on that for both of you. So one of the things from these recommendations, and I think sort of the, the origin story of them is somewhat of people of color in Davis not necessarily feeling welcomed or respected, whether that's by police or, or just in the community more broadly. And I wonder if you could, since we just have 45 seconds for this, what would be the key thing that you would do to, to make Davis feel like a more welcoming place?
So I think that we have a number of departments in, in the city that can work towards that end. So our Arts and Cultural Department could really reflect the, the community that is here. We can do more outreach through our businesses, for instance. The nonprofit that I run works on diversity and inclusion. Some of the things that we've talked about is engaging with the community so that when our students arrive and they're coming from, I mean, you know, many places, they, they know that they are welcome here. There's, and there's just a number of things that we can do through public outreach. Again, that reflects the diversity of our community. Every year, we paint the crosswalks rainbow during Pride. Yes?
Thank you.
Yes.
Adam, I'm going to turn to you as well. What would be some ways, briefly, that you could see making Davis a more welcoming place for its diverse residents?
I would like to see more, not necessarily festivals, but activities involving diverse groups. Seeing the faith-based groups come together at a particular time of year in Central Park so people can exchange ideas, get to know other people of other faiths. I think that's something that's kind of missing. We do address a lot of other groups, but we don't really address our faith-based groups, which are very supportive in the city by running the winter daytime, or the winter rotating shelter, which got paused because of COVID. But they really do provide a valuable service in this community. And I think we need to shine a light on that more.
Okay. So a little bit on that same theme of policing in Davis, I'll turn back to Gloria here. So even a perceived rise in crime can make residents feel unsafe. What are your thoughts on this and what should be done?
So I think, first of all, you have to get the facts out. Very often, you know, things, things take a life of their own on Nextdoor or on social media. And so I think that, that it's important to, to note that, that oftentimes, it is a perceived and not an actual rise in, in crime. And the police department has done a pretty good job of bringing those facts forward and saying, well, you know, we are seeing maybe a small rise. But, you know, we often see maybe a small rise. And, you know, it's, it's kind of the ebb and flow of things. And then to know, is this an actual, something that is out of the norm? And, and to get that information out to the community would go a long way to disarm the sort of anxiety that happens for folks in the community. It's just, communication is, is very, very important. And, you know, I think that, that we can, you know, all play a part in that as well. I know that a while back, there were, there were some, you know, things were happening downtown where there was like the smash and grab. And often, those things that happen here in our community are happening everywhere. So it's not necessarily something that is specific to Davis. And it's, it's important to note that as well.
Thank you so much. So Adam, turning to you then, talking about the perceived or, or real dimensions of, of crime in the community. And what are your thoughts on, on how those sorts of perceptions could be addressed?
Yeah, I, I think Davis is fairly safe when it comes to violent crime. We do have a property crime issue. And part of that is perception, part of it is reality. And that stems from the police department not having adequate staff to investigate, or at least speak to the public about the crimes. Personally, we just had our catalytic converter stolen right of our driveway. And we were told, just file a report online. And that was the extent of our interaction. And so people feel, when they are victims of property crime, feel like it's not being addressed. Whether or not it's increasing or not, it's that, that perception spreads. When they feel they're powerless, they're just going to be a victim, and no one's going to do anything about it. So I think there needs to be more done in that respect as well. And then creating safe places where, where our kids are going. Example, my daughter works at In-N-Out, but we don't let her ride her bike there because of the folks that like to hang out in front of In-N-Out and among the lighting there as well. We had soccer practices for our kids over on community fields and going close to nighttime and at night with the lights. And there were people camping on the north side of the library. And so when you see those things, people are less safe, feel less safe for their children, are less likely to actually let them bike places and do things like that.
Very good. I'll start this time with, with you again, Adam. So we've all felt the blistering effects of climate change, especially a couple of weeks ago here, but continuing. So how should the city prepare for harm which will occur from climate change? And what else should the city be doing to reduce potential harm?
I think we need to do more as far as having more cooling centers. In the case of the blackouts, I, I think we're woefully unprepared for that. We need to have more cooling centers at city facilities, along with that being prepared for any floods. So stockpiling supplies that we can actually use with the public because Red Cross might not be able to get to us if there was a devastating event. So just general more preparedness is good for those emergencies. But in general, I think what the city can do is, is lower its carbon footprint to minimize the effects. We need to make it, the city a place where it's easy to get around by bicycle and where we feel safe to let our kids bike across town. Because tailpipe emissions are the vast majority of greenhouse gas-causing emissions in the city. So addressing those tailpipe emissions is essential to getting that under control.
Thank you. Turning to you, Gloria. Could you, could you tell us how, how you think the city should be addressing issues of climate change?
Sure. So recently, currently, we are in the middle of putting a climate action plan together, climate action and adaptation plan together. And I think that that is going to be the roadmap for us to address all of the issues that we have to address for this climate emergency. It's, it's going to be really important to follow the recommendations in that plan that are feasible and that don't leave people behind. Because that isn't, that's an important part of, of having, having a working plan that's going to, that's going to actually make a difference. And I know that right now, people are a little concerned about some of those recommendations. But I remind people that it is a draft. And the reason that it's out there right now for people to respond to and to give input to is so that we have a robust plan. It's also really important that we work with the county and we work with the state. So the climate crisis is not something that we can do on our own. We really need the, you know, the state to, to help us with incentives for people to, you know, do better weatherproofing for their homes, to help people with solar. We really need to keep our partnerships intact so that we can, so that we can address this.
Very good. I'll start again now with you, Gloria, on this question on affordable housing. So nearly a third of respondents to a recent survey contracted by the city identified the lack of affordable housing as the top challenge facing Davis. As a city council member, what have you done? And in your, if you were to come in again, what would you do to ensure the City of Davis has its fair share of affordable housing?
Sure. And that, and that is one of the biggest challenges that we have. And it's also one of the most critical issues that we have. And every project that has come before council, I've advocated for the maximum number of inclusionary units and where, where those are, where those are feasible. I've also I've also, you know, tried to work to have a number of tools available. We need to have some funds that will go into into our housing trust fund. We need to build something like this so that we can help people with first-time homes. And also, we need to work with the county on their voucher program. The county has a number of vouchers for low-income folks that they don't use up every year because people can't find a landlord that will take those vouchers. The city can come in and help with provide assurance to with down payment assurance and also to support landlords that are willing to take those vouchers. And that would be a way for us to get more affordable housing that we don't, we don't even have to build, that's already that's already out there. And aside from that, I think we need to keep advocating to the state to help us provide some funds to build more inclusionary housing.
Adam, turning to you, talking about the issues of affordable housing, could you tell us your your thoughts of how that should be addressed?
Yeah, I think when most people talk about affordable housing, they're talking about affordable with a lowercase a. Something that entry-level home buyers can afford, because right now we're missing that middle. We have a lot of rental properties, we have a lot of older, larger, single-family homes that are out of the reach of the general public. We couldn't afford to buy the house that we're in, that we've been in 20 years now, where there's no way we could buy our own house. We need to hold any development in the future to a 35% minimum affordable housing. And when I say affordable, I mean like townhomes, condos, and then stipulating in the CCNRs that they must be owner-occupied so that they don't fall into the rental market, so they're there. So as people move out of their homes after their kids leave, other families can move in, and then newer buyers can actually access the market. So those are always there, and we're not shrinking our pool to the rental market. I'd also lean heavily on UC Davis to actually start housing its own workforce. They have the real estate, they have the money. Yes, they're building student housing, they need to build more, but they should take some responsibility for housing their workers and reducing our climate footprint in that way. So that there's so many UC Davis employees that have to commute to campus. I think the university needs to start taking some responsibility for housing those individuals, especially the kind of rank-and-file employees that aren't getting paid nearly enough to be able to buy in Davis.
Thanks so much. I'll start again with you, Gloria, on a on the similar theme, but now digging down a little bit more. Could you comment on the affordable housing elements of recent and upcoming projects? Are they adequate? What specific differences would you like to see on projects going forward? Just no refreshing your memory needed, but just for the people here. So some of those are things like University Mall, the Child's Apartment, DISC 2022, Lincoln 40 Downtown Plan, et cetera. How adequate is the is the affordable housing element in these and others?
So, you know, I would love to see our percentage be 35% as well. I'd love to see, you know, our percentage, you know, be greater than that. The, you know, unfortunately, we have a, you know, a state regulation that prevents us from going above 15% unless we do a feasibility study first. And that is what we are doing right now. So currently, the city is performing a feasibility study that just went before Social Services. And I'm, you know, really looking forward to the information that comes out of that so that we actually have some some facts that that will help us find ways to to get to those, you know, to get to those numbers that we want. I think that the projects that you mentioned, we did as much as we possibly could for those projects. And and will continue, and I will continue to advocate for, you know, as as robust affordability as as we can possibly get out of developers. You know, unfortunately, the reality is that that there are other places that people can build. And I I would love to see as much affordable units that can be built be built here. And and also, again, you know, to be find creative ways to provide some of the different levels that we need.
Excellent. So I actually want to, I think we're doing okay. I want to ask, a bit of a follow up on what you had said, Adam, a moment ago about about the university, in this case, taking more affordable housing share and and actually the Healthy Davis Together being a partnership. So I wonder if if you could just say briefly, what would be the kinds of approaches that you would take to building and enhancing relationships between the city and UC Davis?
Yeah, it needs to be much more cooperative. Right now, it's very one-sided. The the university pretty much does as it chooses. And a perfect example being with Unitrans, I was a Unitrans driver and I'm proud to have done that. But the university basically uses the city to obtain the grant funding for a student transportation system, that's pretty much what it is. And and isn't paying for impact fees to help for the roads. It's very clear that the damage that the roads is being done to the roads from the buses. But it's it needs to be a conversation. I mean, you need to speak with maybe the employees, get the employees involved in demanding housing on campus. It can't be a one-sided relationship.
Can I turn that one to you, Gloria? What 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 would be the kinds of things you'd like to see as improvements in relationship between the city and the campus?
Sure. I think that before UC, before Healthy Davis Together happened, there was an MOU that was hashed out between the city and the university. And the university, I mean, the city did push the university to commit to building on to building its fair share of housing. And I think that that conversation, which was difficult, and, you know, we were kind of on the brink of lawsuits and things like that, really opened up the communication that we have with the university. And the relationship has gotten a lot has gotten a lot better. And I don't think that Healthy Davis Together could have happened if we didn't have that relationship that had been that we had been built that we had built previously. And I look forward to that continuing.
Thank you. So I'll I'll start again here with Gloria, a little back to the housing thing as as you mentioned. The issue of homelessness is certainly on top on many people's minds in Davis. And I wonder, could you just tell us a little bit about what's your sense of why? And what is your, what's your sense of what what the city should be doing to address that challenge?
Well, as I mentioned, we, you know, I was on the subcommittee to put together the this new Department of Housing and Social Services. And that department is looking is is looking at the solutions to homelessness. We have a new department head who has actually, you know, gone out into the community and and worked with our nonprofits, had conversations with our nonprofits. And is trying to figure out, you know, who's here, first of all? Who are the homeless among us? And why are they, why are they in this situation? And what services, how can we connect them to services? And, you know, we need to find a way to prevent homelessness from becoming a culture, from becoming something that is embedded that they accept and that we accept. And, you know, that that just that can't be. And and we've been, I feel like we've been doing things a certain way over and over again, and we need to find a different way to do that. The Respite Center was was a was a great step forward in that direction. We are working with Community Care, we're working with Davis Community Meals on that program. And and it is, as I said, we have to work with the county. Again, we have to work with our regional partners to solve that because oftentimes our homeless folks move between Davis and Woodland, and so we need to work all together.
Thank you. Adam, how do we address the homelessness issue in Davis?
Well, honestly, it's more of, should be falling to the nonprofits and the county. Cities aren't, in general, designed to be providing social services, speaking to members. People who work for Davis Community Meals, they were unhappy that the Respite Center was built. The government's not very good about spending the taxpayer's dime, but a nonprofit sure can stretch a dollar really far. I think the better use of those funds would have directed those to the nonprofits, the ones that are in the trenches, in the that are the experts and know what they're doing. I would have pulled all the stakeholders together, including Department of Veterans Affairs. My father worked for Monterey County as Director of Veterans Affairs, and they would periodically go into the homeless camps and try and find people who had service and put them into those types of with VA services, which is often overlooked. There is a significant portion of the population that is unhoused and are veterans of of our country, so. But ultimately, I think the job of the city should have been to bring in all the stakeholders and say, look, we have these funds. What can we do to facilitate your work? And how can we help? And let them take the lead since they are the experts.
Thanks so much.
Jonathan, if I may interrupt for one minute. We will have some time for audience questions, and Colin Connor will be going around and collecting cards. If you have a question, please pass it towards either Colin or myself, and we will review and select. Thank you.
Oh. Oh, you're right, you're right. Thank you. Okay, I I missed Adam on on one of the questions about the affordable housing elements of of existing projects. Could you just give us your your take on that?
Yeah, so a couple of them. University Mall is no longer doing a housing proposal. It is just a remodel of the existing facility. The Child's Rants or Child's Apartment Complex is being billed as a luxury apartment complex, so I doubt that's really affordable. We know that that Measure H wasn't going to provide the affordable housing, which is why the the public voted it down. I think the public has really developed a certain skepticism to peripheral development because council puts some of these measures before the voters. The voters approve it based on what they've received, and then amendments are made along the way. The voters were sold Brenton Woods that it would be for Davis residents, and clearly, that's illegal, so they can't do that. And this was changed after the vote had taken place. So there's a problem with a lot of bait and switch, and council needs to hold developers accountable for what they say they're going to do. Not accept in lieu of fees for not building affordable housing because that money, we know, is just going to get spent somewhere else. It is not going to contribute to affordable housing. It's better to have the developers build what they say they're going to build and not buy us off to get out of it. So holding them accountable is, I think, what will really help with getting the affordable housing.
And then last question before we go to the audiences, and I'll I'll start with you, Adam, as we started with Gloria for the first question. So do you see any challenges in the city budget? And what will your priorities be to address them?
The city spends millions and millions of dollars on consultants to do reports. Half the time, we don't do anything with them. We say we don't have staff on hand to do it. Well, we should have the subject matter experts on hand, and we should be able to pay them to retain good talent. We need to cut back on some of our contracting and actually hire staff. I think in the long run, it's you get a better product and it's more consistent. Perfect example with the Urban Forest. If we drop a contractor, we're going to have to go back out to bid again, and we're always going to be perpetually behind in our work. And the city needs to be spending the money more wisely in general. The situation on Tulip and Ponte Verde where people express concern for kids crossing the street there. The traffic, folks that work in the streets suggested a four-way stop with a pedestrian flasher, which would have cost the city $0. We have the staff to do the work and the material bought and paid for in the warehouse, and it would have solved the problem. It would have slowed down traffic, it would have made it safe for bikes to cross there. But we decided to pay $150,000 to a consultant to design a project that actually makes the intersection less safe for bicyclists. And that's from talking to all the Davis bicycle community, and they've told me that personally, that it is actually unsafe. And we've spent, we're going to spend $700,000 to make it unsafe.
Good, okay. So last question and and response from you, Gloria, challenges in the city budget and what will be your priorities to address them?
Just turn it off. Okay, so we do have challenges in our budget, and we have, you know, a bit of a gap. I think that we have to make sure that our our revenue streams are resilient. And one of the first things we have to do is make sure that we support the businesses that we have in town already and make sure that they can continue to be successful and and serve serve them so that they are able to continue being being, make sure that we have a vibrant downtown and also, you know, chamber businesses. We have to bring in businesses that are that are diverse so that we don't have just one type of business. I think a good example of that was Mars. We, that was a huge success for the city, and that was the city going out and and recruiting businesses to come here. They, you know, that was, and that was a connection with the university. And as far as like the consultants and the contractors, that is a way for us to save money. We can't, you know, if we hire a specialist, sometimes that specialist is only for a short period of time. And then we continue paying pension on, you know, people once they separate from the city. And I would like to have a little bit of time to talk about the Tulip and Ponte Verde because that is not just the crosswalk. The real danger was that kids were crossing at a blind corner. They were crossing at a blind, you know, not a corner, it was a curve, it was a blind curve. And every morning, those kids are trying to ride in one bike lane in two directions, and I have gone over my time, I'm sorry, but that was very dangerous.
If I may, since we're allowing this, to address pensions. Employees always pay their portion of their pension share. CalPERS establishes the the actuarial tables on how much everyone needs to pay paid. The facade of unfunded liabilities with pensions is not the employee's fault, it's the municipality's fault. CalPERS at different times allows municipalities to wait on making their payments, but they still have to make them. So it's the cities that have not paid their financial burden for the retirements and not the employees.
That's where that follow up. Okay, now we've come to audience questions, and Dylan, we're going to do these as one minute, if you could calibrate that so we can get through as many of these as possible. So first one is the Davis Downtown Business Association, the city, the police department, and the homeless coordinator and other concerned parties held meetings to discuss a Streets Team Program. Then $200,000 of ARP funds were set aside, American Recovery Program, that is, were set aside for this and this type of program. So the question is, what kind of information do we have on a Streets Team Program today? And I'll, let's see, I'll start with you, Gloria, on this one.
Sure. That's a, that's a great program, and it is something that the city is definitely looking into. And so we're collecting information on how to make that a reality.
Adam, do you want to talk about the Street Teams Project from your perspective?
Yeah, I actually, in speaking to the Downtown Business Association, I actually learned quite a lot about that. It's shown success in other cities, and they told me basically, well, if the city's not going to pay for it, we're going to do it anyway because it's in the best interest of the businesses.
Okay, thank you. Thank you both. So this is the second question. I'm just going to read these as they come. Please tell us about your personal experience with law enforcement and the criminal justice system. Have you ever been arrested or convicted of a crime? Please tell us about that experience.
In 1994, I got a speeding ticket. In 1994, I got a speeding ticket after getting my license. Oh wait, no, it was '92. And then I got another one in 2000. And then I've passed multiple background exams for different agencies, I've passed a psych evaluation for a fire department, polygraph exam, and fingerprinting. And other than those two tickets, that's it.
All right, very good. Thank you. Could you tell us, Gloria, about your experience with the criminal justice system?
Sure. So when I lived in LA, I was handed down a 69 Impella, which was actually a police magnet, and I was pulled over on multiple occasions, and that continued until I bought a minivan. But yes, I have been arrested, and so I've had that experience with the police. I still respect the police greatly.
So our third question here, "How are we reducing the problem of grass in parks to reduce watering during this drought and the associated climate change problems?" Yeah, how are we dealing with the problem of grass in parks? I guess-
The weeds. It's the weed problem, right? The foxtails and suchlike, and those things. So we, we had, rightly so, outlawed Roundup, and this led to, you know, an explosion of weeds in the park, and unfortunately, did not have enough, we did not budget enough for that to be taken care of via, you know, people going out there and pulling weeds. I actually go out and pull weeds every spring when I see those come up. So, you know, we have budgeted more so that people can maintain our parks. You have those handoffs. You don't have Roundup, but you have, you have foxtails. But definitely, we are, you know, we are finding ways to adjust to that.
And just because I think I interpreted there's the foxtail issue, but I think the other part of this question is just dealing with the issue of climate change and drought, and being, reducing water use from all that turf in the parks.
Sure. And the city does, you know, reduce what they're doing for watering. They've also partnered with Tree Davis to go out and actually water the trees that are in downtown in places that, so that we don't have to water an entire field, and we can water a, yes, the trees.
Adam, your thoughts on how do we deal with the issue of watering that much turf and water thirsty landscapes?
Yeah, there actually are quite a few solutions. You don't have to zero-scape or pave over everything, because that just compounds the problem of urban heat island effect. In places that aren't being used as athletic fields, you can actually plant bunch grasses developed by UC Davis. It's called buffalo grass. And it's perennial, so it'll stay green all year. It's low on water, and actually, by the nature of its growth, it doesn't even have to be mowed. And it can accept a lot of foot traffic. You'll see it, actually, it's growing up in Costco, along the medians and places like that. It's actually, we looked into it before we actually got rid of our lawn in our backyard, but we had considered it because it is such a good product that was developed here by UC Davis. It is water-efficient and drought-tolerant, and it's an evergreen.
Jessica, just a check-in, should we keep rolling? Or, that was the last of the numbered questions.
That was the last? Well, you can read that final question.
Okay, even though it wasn't numbered? Okay, great.
So, folks, our moderator for the second half, that's second half, and she's just arrived, so we're letting this one go till 7:30, and then we'll have a 10-minute break.
Okay, so the last question is as follows. I'll start with Adam here. And I don't have context, I'm just going to read it as it is. So how did it happen that the council voted unanimously for a development project that was rejected by over 60% of Davis voters?
It's a good question. It was rejected once before, and was soundly rejected again. Clearly, the public doesn't want it. Honestly, it was a poor location. It's grade-one ag soil, you can't get anything better than that, and we're going to just go and pave over it, so. I mean, they voted for it, and they campaigned for it. The literature I received at my house had pictures of all five council members. I don't believe councils should be lobbying the public for any development. They should go through the review process, see if they think it fits into town, and then let, actually let the voters decide and not campaign on it. There was some things that occurred that were inappropriate, and people were silent and didn't say anything about it, so.
Okay, great, thank you. Could you tell us, Gloria, about-
Sure. You know, when the, you know, voter initiative for peripheral development is something that our community asked for. They wanted to have a voice in, you know, what projects get developed. And our job as a city council is to ask the question if that development meets all of the qualifications for it to go forward. And, you know, it was fully vetted, it was fully vetted twice, you know, we went through the EIR process, and then, you know, the first time, it didn't pass, but it was very close. And the whole point of it going to the voters is for everyone to have a voice. And so, yes, there were more voices that rejected it, but there were, you know, you have to make sure that the voices that are out there that maybe want that will have their opportunity as well to say, to say yes. And clearly, they said yes on two projects before.
Thank you so much, both, to Gloria Partita and Adam Morrell, for a very lively conversation, very thoughtful answers. Thanks to the members of the audience for contributing your questions. With that, I will, I will close out this portion and leave it to Jessica to make any final comments.
Great. As you'll notice, if you were able to receive a handout, on the end, there's a place where you can put your phone to take a picture. It's a QR code, and it will link to a feedback survey. We welcome your feedback. If you are going to be leaving and not attending the second session, and you don't need your handout, if you could put it back on the table, it looks like we're running low. And this concludes the first half of our forum tonight. There will be another one coming up with, from the League of Women Voters, so there's going to be more opportunities to learn more about these candidates. But before they leave the stage, let's all give them a big round of applause.